Good evening, this is Thursday. A zoning board virtual meeting of February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The meeting of the Franklin Zoning Board of Adjustment at Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID- nineteen pandemic. And it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the zoning board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format and is being conducted utilizing virtual and remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the State of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the zoning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, the Courier-News on the township website, and within the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting: link to the virtual meeting via WebEx and a call-in number for those without Internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website and/or in the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. Reminder to the board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Please withhold your questions until all the applicant's witnesses have finished presenting, at which time the Chair will ask the board for comment. The following is the instructions for public input. For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, please raise the hand but raise hand button to in to use this feature. Click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press the star three on your phone. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have the opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if you're on WebEx, please lower your, please press the lower hand button, and if you're calling in, please press star three again. Okay, Mr. Chair, would you like for me to call the roll?
Ah, yes, call the roll, please.
Surely. Cheryl Bethia.
Here.
Richard Prokanic.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Joel Reese, Robert Shepherd, and Elizabeth Clarkin all asked to be excused. Alan Rich.
Here.
Gary Rosenfeld.
Here.
Basim Verdas.
Here.
And Chairman Thomas.
Here. Uh, moving down to the hearing section, St. Charbel Maranite Church, ZBA twenty oh 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 twenty-seven is going to be carried to April twenty-first with notification being needed. Do you need to put that up on the screen or read anything additional uh for the public?
I'll, I'll read the, I'll read the summation as, as I guess Mark has always done. So it's the same Charbel Maranite Church docket number ZBA two zero 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 two seven. This is a D-three conditional use variance preliminary and final site plan with C variants in which the applicant proposes demolishing the existing church and daycare use, as well as four of the single-family homes on the site and constructing a new thirty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-nine square place of worship at five-two-six Eastern Avenue in Somerset, block two-six-one, and lots one through six in zones O, P, and R-seven. This matter will be carried to Thursday, April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two at seven-thirty PM. As Mr. Thomas had stated, notification will be needed. At this specific time, the township has been told that we will remain virtual up until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. So notification will be provided as we are maybe changing our venue as of that time. If anybody is on the phone here or on this meeting for St. Charbel, this matter will be called, uh, carried to April twenty-first. If you have any specific questions or would like to see any of the documentation for this application, please contact me at the township at seven-three-two-eight-seven-three-two-five-zero-zero, and my extension is six-two-one-five. This matter also has the documents on the township's website at www. Dot Franklin T W P N J dot org.
Okay, the first hearing that the schedule, Marson Baginsky, ZBA twenty-two oh 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 one, the C variants in which the applicant constructed a twelve-by-eighteen foot shed without permits at twelve Crown Road Somerset Block four sixty-eight point oh six lot two in the R fifteen zone. Um, I know that there were some technical problems. Have they been resolved so we can begin this, or should we move to the next hearing?
Um, I actually have several missed phone calls from him, so if you please excuse me, Mark can host the meeting, and I assume that you should probably move on to the next one, and I will step away and try to help Mr. Baginsky get on, if that's okay, Mark?
I mean, if he's, if we don't have confirmation that he's in, I, I don't see anybody by his name.
No, he, he doesn't seem to be in, and he's calling my phone several times, so I'm assuming he cannot get in.
Okay, then, uh, tech, technology-wise and attendance-wise, are we able to move to Maureen and Ed Edward Mattson, ZBA twenty-one oh 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 twenty-four, C variants in which the applicant's proposing to build a single-family home at fifty-one Arlington Avenue Somerset Block two sixty-three point oh one lots fifty-two, fifty-three in the R-ten zone?
Yes, sir, all of those members um that I had on the list, they are available on the ten D list, so Mark will be able to pull them over.
Okay, if we can get that accomplished, then we will start with that hearing.
Okay, so I brought over um Mr. Ford um and Ms. Mattson. I see Mr. Stall on here, but I, for some reason, I'm not able to make him a panelist. Uh, Mr. Stall, are you there? I see his name, but I don't um. Mr. Stall?
Are you muted?
Okay.
So, uh, Mrs., so Frank, uh, I, I, their attorney, I don't know what um the issue is with him technologically. I can't bring him over into the meeting. I've, he's not muted. Um, so we might want that, but I do see Mr. Baginsky now, so maybe we should change back and go back to Mr. Baginsky. And maybe Mr. Stall has to go back in.
Okay, uh, we'll try that. I see uh Ms. Mattson appeared, so uh.
So I'm gonna put um, I'm gonna put Mr. Ford and, and Ms. Mattson back as attendees. Um, and then I'll bring over um Mr. Baginsky, and we'll do his hearing.
Okay, then we'll switch back.
So Mr. Stall will have to log out and log back in.
We'll try again, the first hearing, Marson Baginsky, ZBA twenty-two oh 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 one, C variants in which the applicant constructed a twelve-by-eighteen-foot shed without permits, twelve Crown Road Somerset Block four sixty-eight point oh six lot two in the R-fifteen zone. Are we able to get that put together now?
I brought him over as a panelist. I see his name in the right area, so hopefully we'll have video and, and audio soon.
Are you there, Mr. Baginsky?
Yes, hello, good evening, everyone.
Can you turn on your camera?
Uh.
There you are, okay, good.
Took a little while, too.
Right, before you proceed, Mr. Big Baginsky, just want to swear you in, so if you could just raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, if you could just spell your name.
Marcin Baginsky, M-A-R-C-I-N-B-A-G-I-N-S-K-I.
Thank you.
And are you representing yourself, or do you have an attorney?
I'm representing myself.
Okay, uh, would you, Mark, be able to give us a quick summary before we uh ask for testimony?
Sure, uh, and I'll just basically summarize from the TRC report. Uh, so the applicant constructed a twelve-by-eighteen shed, uh, which is two hundred and sixteen square feet in the right-left corner of his property. Uh, it was placed five feet from the side and rear property lines. That is the requirement for accessory structures that are two hundred square feet or less. Um, but since this structure is two hundred and sixteen square feet, uh, larger setbacks of ten feet from the side and twenty-five feet from the rear are required. Uh, so Mr. Baginsky is um here for a variance requesting that the shed be allowed to remain at the five-feet setback from the side and rear lot lines. Um, in the TRC report, and Mr. Baginsky is here, so he can obviously provide his own testimony, uh, but in the TRC report, there's um some, some images of the location of the property, uh, an aerial photograph of the property. Um, and you also see a um, uh, copy of the survey with the location of the shed again in that rear-left corner of the property. So that's the background. Um, I'll hand it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we're here for setback, side yard and rear yard setbacks.
Correct, for a two hundred and sixteen-square-foot shed.
All right, uh, Mr. Baginsky, is that essentially what uh, you agree with that?
Um, yes.
Okay, uh, is this a, is there, well, what, what do you have to tell us? Make your presentation, and then we'll see if there are any questions.
So as a, I stated in my application, I was building the shed with intention. It was my mistake, I miscalculated. I was shooting for two hundred square feet shed, and it turned out to be two hundred and sixteen. And it wasn't purposely done this way. I just wanted to get something for my storage, for gardening tools and my kids' toys to have something to store in there. And basically, if I could go back in time, I would build something smaller that would fit within, or I would move it further away. I, I don't know what, what else I can say. I'm a new homeowner, I didn't have any experience before, like, uh, dealing with such a thing like permits and uh and township, pretty much. And now I'm, I'm learning it, unfortunately, the hard way. I wish the, I haven't done it, but it's already done. So I'm, I'm sorry for all this chaos that I created because of that.
Okay, did you build it yourself, or did you have a contractor?
No, I actually built it myself.
Okay, uh, what does it, what does it sit on? What kind of a foundation?
It's on a concrete slab.
Okay, so we can't move the concrete slab?
If it wasn't on it, I would probably move it by now, and we wouldn't have this situation.
Of course, you notified the neighbors and everything according to the proper protocol for the hearing?
Yes, absolutely.
Have any neighbors mentioned anything to you about it?
Not a single one. Everybody was like a surprise that actually there's some kind of issue with this. But I explained it that the, I need a permit and I need to go the proper way, and they're like, they were, everybody was very supportive about it.
Okay, is any uh board members have any questions? Yeah, I do, so, so who caused?
What did you say was in the shed?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
What did you say was in the shed? I couldn't hear.
Uh, gardening tools and a lawnmower, leaf blower, and uh, some, like, uh, basic, basic tools for, for home, and my kids uh ride on uh some ATVs, like, uh battery ones and bicycles. Like, things I couldn't fit in my garage because I have no basement and I have no attic, and I.
Nothing flammable, right?
No, nothing.
How did the, how did you get it here, by the way? How did this?
I'm sorry.
How did this come about, that you ending up being, you built it? Who told you you needed a permit or you needed to come for a hearing?
I received a letter in the mail from the township about that, and I, I respond, I responded right away. I think pretty much the same day or next day, I went to the township and I asked what the, what should the, should I do, what I need to uh proceed with, and I was advised to do this.
Okay, hey, any other board questions?
I do have one, so to clarify, you, in, when you built this, you went to build the shed, you did not um go for any permit at all, you just went and constructed it on the property, is that correct?
Um, I made a phone call to the township to find out about the permits and about the rules, and since I, I said, like I said, I was planning to build a two hundred square feet shed, and the person who I spoke with told me that if I'm building up to two hundred square feet, I don't need to obtain permits, but I I should get the zoning inspector on the, on the spot to make sure that I'm building in the right spot. But the, it was like, it was said, I should, but it wasn't like, I have to, so I took it as a optional thing.
Okay, so you didn't, so there was no zoning involved, it just, you just went ahead and constructed it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And anybody else have any questions? Okay, let's see if there are any members of the public for this, let's open to the public.
Okay, so I do see uh somebody with their hand raised, um, Rich Pellis.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm here, yes, thank you.
So if you could provide uh spelling of your last name and your address?
Uh, P as in Peter, E-L-L-I-S, and the address is fourteen Crown Road.
Okay, so uh, go ahead, please.
Uh, okay, I'll, thank you for your time, I'll make this brief. Uh, I just have a couple of statements and maybe a question or two. My wife and I have lived at Crown Road and uh fourteen Crown Road. We had a fence installed between the property and that of twelve Crown Road in two thousand and eleven. The fence runs from the front of the property to the back of the property. We had, uh, this is on township records, I'm sure, if you looked in there, I'm glad. Mr. Baginsky has referred in conversations with my wife and I a few times that the fence is his, which is not correct, and I believe this may have led to part of the problem, I'm not sure. At the time of the installation, our contractor, who was Mornick, informed us that the fence would be installed one foot inside our property line to allow for maintenance and repairs. I don't understand if Mr. Baginsky didn't understand this, or if he didn't believe that the fence was ours, but I questioned where he took his measurements from. Did he take his measurements from where his shed began to the fence, or did he take it to the actual property line, which is one foot inside the fence? I believe if a permit had been obtained, which I mentioned to Mr. Baginsky when he was construct, constructing the shed, that a plan review or an inspector probably would have come out and explained things to him a little bit better, so he would have known where exactly to place the shed and how to go without doing it. Regarding the misunderstanding of the size of the shed, Mr. Baginsky, to his own testimony, had a concrete slab. It's my understanding that anytime you do this, you have to furnish the supplier of the concrete with specifics when you're lengthened with your square footage. I don't understand how the, the foundation was poured to the exact dimensions of what the shed is now, if Mr. Baginsky says he was shooting for something smaller. Uh, uh, this is, this is just a little, a little mind-boggling to me. Our main concern, actually, at this time, my wife and I, is that at the point, if the variance is granted, the fact that the shed is so close to our property line may have a negative effect on our selling of the house when and if that time comes. The fact that where the shed sits now, personally to me, other than the fact that I think Mr. Baginsky could have done a little bit more research, is not really troubling to me. But I don't want an issue down the road, not, as I said, when and if my wife and I decide to sell, that there's something to do with the distance or the property line or something that prohibits our sale or just makes it that much more difficult. That's all I have to say, any questions? I'm sorry, what?
Any questions then? Okay, thank you for your input. Anyone else in the public have any questions or comment?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, then we'll close the public, and uh we'll go back to the board here. Uh, open to your discussion, comments, suggestions. Uh, we have a lot of, I won't say a lot of things, we have, we've had a number of applications like this, it's uh, in this case, we do have basically a neighbor objecting. Uh, let's hear your comments or, or motion. This could have been absolutely avoided had a permit been applied for an issue. Uh, there's plenty, there is plenty of room uh to have met all the setbacks. I, I don't think that the issue with the fence is relevant here because he, the, the shed is too close to the real property line, whether uh, the fence is on the line or a foot back of the line. Uh, shed's still not observing the proper setback. Comments, please?
I guess I, this is true, I, I would agree, I mean, it, I think the fundamental issue is the boundary line and the fact that the shed is, is not um set far enough. Um, and it's really been stated, if, if a permit um was requested, then all of this step could have been avoided. Um, so I, I do honestly find it hard to give a, a yes when it is affecting, it is detrimental to uh others in the neighborhood, and it, it could have easily um been avoided. It's unfortunate that the, the shed is on a concrete slab, which is basically would have to be destroyed, but I don't know how else we can get around it. It isn't, it is in violation, and it appears to be uh an issue for the neighborhood, so it, it is of a detriment.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I, I have one question. The, the concrete slab that it's on, does that have footings, or is it a floating concrete slab on top of the, on top of the ground?
It's, it's a concrete slab on top of the ground, but it's uh about five and a half inch thick.
Okay, so can, can you still get like a, a little bulldozer in there with a chain and still slide it over the ground?
I don't think that would be possible without destroying, like Cheryl said. So this would be pretty much a demolition kind of a work.
Okay.
We don't. And just to clarify, the information that my neighbor stated, that the, he was telling me about the fence, that the fence was his and all the setbacks that um, he never told me that. He mentioned that the fence was his, but I, I found it hard to believe because the same kind of fence goes around my property, not his property. So it's basically continuing the same style, same fence, which goes around my backyard on, by, between me and my neighbor, which was, say, talking before, my back line, but back property line and the other property line. So it goes all around my property, so I'm not sure how that actually was um said, put it by him, and I don't think he put the fence around the previous owner of my house. But that's basically, just to clarify that, and uh, he was never advising me to do anything anyway, like, uh, to obtain permits, to ask somebody or anything, there was no such a conversation, so that was a pretty much false statement that he was saying before. I don't know why he was saying it. Just.
Mr. Chairman, Frank, it's, I, I, I don't, I think, um, Chairman Thomas, I think you said a few minutes ago, I don't think this fence issue really um pertains to the question of the shed. Um, I, I think something that, that may help the board, if I was to uh miss, ask Mr. Pellis, he indicated that he, he thought that this might hurt the resale of his property. Um, it, it may help the board understand why he feels that way. Um, would, would, would the board want to hear that question?
Well, I think it's relevant, I think the he's entitled to have his opinion, and he certainly, if that is an objection of his, uh, we really should hear why he thinks that would negatively affect the value.
Uh, I mean, for example, if this was uh, you know, some large structure right up next to his house, that might be um a different impact than if it's further away from his house and visible or not visible, so you may want to hear from him what, you know, again, why, why he offered that opinion to the board. So I'm gonna.
And I wasn't quite sure at one point, uh, when he was speaking, whether it was the actual location of the shed that was bothering him more, or his issue with the ownership of the fence. Uh, it would help if he would come back on and clarify it from my point of view.
Before I do that, real quick, Mr. Baginsky, how tall is the shed?
Um, it's eight feet poles.
About eight feet, okay, I thank you. All right, so I'm gonna unmute Mr. Pellis. Mr. Pellis, are you there?
Yes, I am, sure.
So you heard the questioning just now, so the board would like to hear your opinion on, on why you feel this may impact your property, and that you mentioned resale, et cetera. Can you explain why you feel that way?
I just, I, I'll be honest with you, I'm not all sure about what items are looked into and aren't looked into when a house slash property is put up for sale. I don't know what kind of detail goes into checking boundaries or checking, you know, where, where certain items sit along the line of boundary or the property line. It's just something, I guess all I can say is I'm looking to avoid any potential problems down the road. If, if there's nothing that I need to worry about regarding resale, where the shed sits, where my property line is, then I'll, obviously, I'll take your gentleman's word on it because you're much more experienced in this than I am. I'm just, and it's not like we're gonna sell the house tomorrow, we plan on being here for quite a while, but when I do decide to sell, I just don't want to come up with any issues or problems regarding the property line and something being too close to the property line on the other side, that, you know, it's, it's just a concern of mine at this point. If, if I could address though for one, one instance, Mr. Baginsky's question about the fence. We put up this fence eleven years ago, and the other three sides of my yard are all fenced in with split rail. We put this one up at this time because we wanted a little bit more privacy, and, you know, we didn't think, you know, we didn't think the split rail would work at that time, we didn't. You know, we didn't think, you know, we didn't think the split rail would work at that time. We didn't, you know, we're too familiar with it. We weren't too positive with it on that side of the house. With his concern with the rest of his yard being fenced in that way, that was done that way by the owner of the house prior to him. Once he saw what this, what our fence looked like, it's a six foot high, more or less a vinyl fence that runs along there. The prior owner of the house who talked to me about it, said he really liked the way the fence looked. He was going to have his yard closed in the rest of the way with the same fence. That's why, that's why the fence looks like it all belongs to the same house when it does. And then I, I know, I know my answer was a little complicated, but is there anything else I can try to clarify for you or?
And Mr. Palace, this is Frank Regan, the board attorney, just, and, and obviously I, I'm not, not advising you with respect to, to your property. But if you were to sell your property somewhere in the future, you know, a buyer would obtain a survey that's generally required. You know, for title insurance and for, for financing. Um, and that would obviously show, you know, any potential encroachments. It would show the location of the fence on your property. Um, and if the board was to, um, to approve the, the, the variance that's being requested by the applicant. You know, as it's designed, or actually not as it's designed, as it's, as it exists. The, the shed is five feet from the property line, from your property line as well as the rear property line. And really the issue here is the size of the shed. Um, because pursuant to the township's. Land development ordinance. Uh, and, and I think as you heard from the testimony of the applicant. Um, if he had built the shed to the. Correct specifications of no more than 200 square feet. It would be at the location it's at. It just wouldn't, it's, it's really the size that, that's at issue here. And I don't believe it would have any, you know, negative impact, at least from a legal perspective on your property, if you were to sell it in the future. As to whether it might have any effect on market value, I'm not going to get into that.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, when, when the, the survey is done for this, it would show the fence and the property line. So any potential buyer would realize. That the property line as it stands now and the fence, the fence is five feet inside of that property line. They would see that on the survey?
The, the survey for your property would show your, you know, the property line between your property and the adjoining property would show the location. It should show the location of the fence. Um, it might even show, it might even show a portion of the, um, of the, of the shed on the adjoining property. It may not. That would really be up to the survey.
But in your, in your opinion, in your opinion, it, it would, should or would not have any potential impact on the sale of the house?
Not from a legal perspective. I'm not going to, as I said, I'm not going to opine or, or suggest as, as it relates to, you know, market conditions or. I don't believe it would.
Yeah, and let me, I'll just chime in too, is. Somebody who's in the, working in the zoning office and doing this for 25 years. You know, I certainly never say never, but we get calls from people who are selling property, attorneys who are, who are attorneys to people who are purchasing properties. I've personally never seen the location of a shed on a, on an adjoining property. Be something that's affecting the sale of another property. Not to say that, never say never, but it's, it is on their property. Uh, not, not, not going on to yours. And again, I've, I've just never heard that.
And the, and the variance, if approved, would alleviate any concerns about the shed being too close as opposed to county board orders, correct?
Correct. That would be correct.
In essence, what he's asking for is forgiveness, if you will, because based on the size of the shed, it's supposed to be. 10 foot off of the property, property line, but he placed it five feet. And if it was, so it's a 12 by 18 shed, if it was 12 by 16. It'd be 200, be less than 200 square feet and it would be, it'd be permitted to be placed. Five feet from the property line. So when Frank was saying it's the size of the shed. Uh, that's kind of, I think what Frank was speaking to, to a degree, if it was 16 square feet smaller. It would be permitted to be at that five foot setback and it wouldn't, he would have obtained a zoning permit and he wouldn't be before you tonight.
Okay, I, I understand and I appreciate that. I, I guess it's more a case of, you know, if it had been done. Properly the way it should have been done with a permit application such, we probably wouldn't be here right now. But I appreciate, you know, your explanation and everything. I understand where you're coming from. And you've alleviated my concern for the most part about, you know, selling in the future. The, the, obviously the, the, whether to, whether to approve the variance or not. Is, is not up to me. It's up to you, up to you gentlemen. So. Like I said, you, my main concern, you've addressed and I'm very satisfied with that answer.
Okay, then we thank you for your help on this, uh, on this project too. All right, any board comments, questions, or? If you're inclined at this point, a motion.
I, I do have one comment. Um, to, to Mark's point. Um, if the, if the shed was 12 feet by 16 and a half feet, it'd be under 200 square feet. So it's just, just a touch too big.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. We approve ZBA 220001.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? Okay, would you call the board, please?
Cheryl Dethia.
I'm going to say yes. I just want to make the comment that in, unfortunately, unfortunately, if there was a way that. Uh, the township could. Communicate to individuals who are, who aren't as familiar with the zoning law. Maybe a stronger recommendation, uh, to go through the zoning, but I, it, when it's optional, I, I believe people just say, well, you know, I won't bother. So that some of this could be avoided if, perhaps if there was a better way to. Make a stronger recommendation to, uh, to residents to, to go through that process. But yeah, my, my answer is a yes, so.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
I'm going to vote yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
And I'll vote yes also. I just want to, uh, say to the applicant, good luck with, with the shed and I hope. That, uh, you appreciate the generosity and the helpfulness of your neighbor. And the idea that really if you build anything on your property in the backyard or the front yard, you need to. Really have a conversation with the, uh. Building construction department in the township. But anyway. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Thank you very much.
Uh, now we can move to Maureen and Edwin, Edward Mattson, ZBA 210024. See variants in which the applicant's proposing to build a single family home at 51 Arlington Avenue Somerset. Block 263.01, lots 52 and 53 in the R10 zone. We can begin bringing in, uh, everybody for this application. We have, as a board, seen Mrs. Mattson several times.
Student Ked.
Not in the year, not in the recent past, however. And welcome, Mr. Stahl.
Thank you. Ah, there I am. I even put a tie on tonight, Mr. Thomas, because I just wanted to impress you and Mr. Rosenthal.
You can be uncomfortable.
Oh, I, I believe in some, some levity in life, that's why, but not disrespect. Uh, Jim Stahl, Boris Golden Foley of North Brunswick, uh, we represent, uh, Maureen in connection with this application. I have two witnesses, Maureen, uh, who will be, uh, short and sweet. Uh, I'm not talking about height or anything. And Michael Ford will be our engineer, describe the house and conditions. And will be the professional planner. I don't talk a lot. I, just to summarize, the board would know, well, first of all. Chris, do we have, the board of jurisdiction, you received our affidavit of publication and, um, and service, am I correct?
Yes, I believe so.
All right. Thank you very much.
I, I, I'm sorry, but, but before you start, I want to, uh, clear one issue up. Right away, so we don't come back to it later. This, this is a, a, uh, application where we need a. Evidence of a buy, sell, offer. We could get that out of the way.
Uh, well, yes and no, but yes, you're correct. Yes, we did submit those, those, uh, those letters. But even without the letters, as you'll see when Mike Ford, and I'm not arguing, we, we did it because we had to do it. But when you, when the board sees the surveys, it becomes obvious that there is no. We can't get space and they were not interested to buy it. But yes, the answer is it was a buy and sell letter. It is an undersized lot, of course, and we're looking to. To, uh, Maureen is looking to, to put a house there. Uh, Michael Ford is going to give you the information and then, uh. With regard to the house, Maureen will describe the size, bedroom count, et cetera. And then Michael will conclude with his professional planning testimony. So if, um, Frank can swear in or, or whoever swears in, Maureen, uh, I can get started.
Mattson, can you just raise your right hand? Swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record.
Just, uh, state your name, spell your last name, please.
Uh, my name is Maureen Mattson. It's M A T S O N.
And you, and you and Edward are the owners of a, a lot and undersized lots, 52 and 53 in block, uh, 26301, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you, you're in the business of building houses, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you was to build a house on this particular property?
I do.
And you knew it was undersized, but you also knew that there were other, uh, houses in the area that were similarly undersized. And you also made inquiries when you acquired the property as to whether anyone was interested in, in buying. All or any portion of it for their property. Is that correct?
That's correct. I did.
And no one was really interested?
Right. Nobody was interested in purchasing. I didn't get one letter, one signed letter back, but that was it, that they were, were not interested in purchasing.
Uh, you're like a professor, you are a professional, so, uh, yeah, thank you. The, uh, the house, describe the house. It's a two-story house. Tell us what's on the first floor, what's on the second floor.
Okay, it's a two-story home, uh, 1992 square feet. Uh, the first floor is a family room, dining room, kitchen combination, powder room. Um, the second, uh, the second floor has three baths. It was a four bath home, but I, I pared it down to three baths to make a better room for parking. Um, so it's three bathrooms, uh, three bedrooms upstairs, two full baths. And, um. And it does have a one car garage and a full basement.
Do what I was saying, and there's also a porch in the front, is that correct?
That is correct.
Covered porch that comes, well, okay. Uh, and, um. That's all I have as witness, Mr. Chairman, and we can move on to Mr. Ford.
Okay, bring in Mr. Ford. Anybody have any questions first before I do that, by the way? That's a, one question I had.
Jim, this is Gary. Um, do you have a contract on this house yet, Jim?
I purchased the house four years ago. I mean, I'm at the house, the, um, property. I own the property, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Stahl, I'm sorry for.
All right, we're doing it. Uh, Mike Ford, where are you?
Mr. Ford, uh, raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, Michael, please state your name, spell your last name.
Yes, Michael Ford, F O R D.
All right, Michael, you were the engineer that was engaged on this project?
That's correct.
Well, let's qualify you. Uh, how long have you been licensed in New Jersey?
Uh, over 30 years.
All right, so any other jurisdictions?
And I've appeared before this board on.
Who's going to ask you that?
Well, we're accepted credentials.
Thank you. I want to qualify him on one other area. Michael, you are a professional planner, is that correct?
That's correct.
And how many years have you been licensed as a PP?
Uh, about the same 30 years.
All right, I didn't even know.
He has qualified as a planner also.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Many times here.
And we, we still believe him. Michael, would you please describe, as I usually ask you, and then you can run it. What are the existing conditions on the property? And two, uh, what is the proposed construction, drainage and other issues that the board has to hear? When you're done with that, we'll get into the planning testimony.
All right, uh, description of the property, it's located in the R10 zone at 51 Arlington Road. It's a 50 foot wide by 115 foot deep lot. Or 5,750 square feet in size. Uh, it's fronts on Arlington Road, which is a, an improved street with public utilities in it. Those public utilities would service the proposed dwelling. And with regards to, uh, grading and drainage, uh, the property generally slopes from front to back.
They propose construction?
Yes, the, uh, proposed construction, uh, as Mrs. Mattson described is a three-bedroom. Two-story dwelling with a single car garage and a driveway access off Arlington. The, uh, with the nature of the surrounding properties is that, uh, all of the surrounding properties are. Occupied by other structures. That is, there are no vacant lands adjoining us. Uh, and the, um. Most nearby neighbors, that is our neighbor to the, uh, left and to the right. Uh, to the left is this two-story, uh, structure, a residential structure, which has a front porch. Uh, and then to our right is a, a ranch.
And how about the size lots on those other, in the area generally?
Generally, uh, we're probably the smallest. Uh, this is all, um.
Fully developed?
Yeah, fully developed, uh, nature of, um, a subdivision, uh, where 115 foot deep. Lots, all 25 feet wide. In this case, we have two lots, the lot. Uh, 50, is it 51 and 52 or 53 to 52 and 53, they'll be combined or merged. Uh, but the surrounding properties are in similar nature, but, um, we're, um. 50 feet wide, while our neighbor directly to the rear of us is 75 feet wide. And then our neighbors on either side of us are 100 feet wide. So they're slightly larger, they're larger than us. We're, we're the, we're the hole in the donut.
All right, thank you. Uh, now the, the planning, before I get there, I didn't see in the application. And, um, you can look for Mr. Reagan or Mr. Thomas. We would, we would, uh, re-subdivide the two lots so that there are one lot. Is that correct?
Yeah, one of the, uh, points in the, uh, review, the one review per report we received from the township, the December 22nd. DRC, uh, 2021 TRC review, uh, requires that the lots be merged.
All right, and we have no problem, obviously, with that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Does you have any issues with regard to the staff reports? Anything that we.
None at all.
Comply, not at all?
Not at all. We would comply with each and every one of them, including, uh, the observation that we have some housekeeping and cleaning up on the plan to do with our numbers and figures and calculations. And we will do all of that. And I can describe some more of that in the detailed testimony regarding planning.
I want you to move on to planning now. Thank you.
Hey, could I interrupt? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I just want to rehash this quickly. Do we have in the application packet? Evidence of letters sent to the two neighbors offering. Asking if they were interested in purchasing this property to merge onto their, into their, onto their lots. And, um, Mrs., uh, Ms. Mattson mentioned she had a letter back. Do we have a letter, the letter back from the one?
Yes, we had submitted.
Refuses, that is turning it down, does not, that's not interested.
Yes, we have, those were submitted. Uh, I don't have that part of the file with me, but I can tell you that they were submitted. And if there's any, uh, question, I'll resubmit them again. But they were.
But they work, say, Frank, historically, with these applications, we've physically required evidence of offers to buy and sell the property to make.
It should be in the file, Mr. Thomas, it should be there.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a look. I don't know if Christine.
Actually, I just looked on on the township website, on the Civic Clerk, it actually has them there.
Okay, I'm gonna dump it.
I I can bring them up if you'd like me to share.
They're on the township website, I can go with that, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna. Arm right now, I'll do the same and confirm for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, bring on the planning.
Bring on the planner, all right, change hats, Michael, now you're a planner.
Mr. Ford, I made you presenter, would you be able to bring up the this, the plot plan and the and the architectural, so the board has something to look at?
Mark, that was our plan, I think that
Okay, great.
I'd have to share with Mike.
I made I made Mr. Ford presenter, so he should be able to do that.
Okay.
Just trying to find the right. Oh, that's the letters, okay, here we are. Yeah. Can you, can everybody see the the dwelling architectural plans now?
Okay.
All right, let me go to the. Here's the variance plan, can everybody see the variance plan? Is that working, Mark?
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, thank you. All right. I can zoom in a little bit so we could see a little better that this is the entire plan you see at the bottom of the pages. Arlington Avenue. The proposed structure is shaded in on this plan, and I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see a little better. See if this works. Technology. Oh. Zoom out just a little bit, okay. I know that I can get it. Okay, so this this shows the fifty foot wide lot by a hundred and fifty feet deep. You see that we've provided on the variance plan the details of the footprint of the dwelling, the architectural, from the architectural plans. That is the driveway entrance to the garage, the front entrance to the building immediately to the left of the garage with a concrete pad, a series of steps up to a small covered porch. And I'll get to the significance of this covered porch in a minute. Then the proposed dwelling is basically a rectangle of twenty seven feet wide. We meet all of the building setback criteria, that is, the front, rear and side and combined side yard setback criteria. And at the rear, we have a set of steps going back down to grade, and this is a walkout basement to to work with the land, if you will, because it slopes down toward the back. With regards to zoning the the existing non-conformities, the lot width and lot area are C one hardship variances. The inability to rectify them since there is no available land either to our sides or to our rear, and you can see on this plan some of the improvements on the properties, both to our right and left, they're fully developed with existing single family dwellings. So there's really no way to rectify the, you know, exceptional and unique characteristics of this particular lot, like I described it, where it's basically two of those twenty five foot wide lots who are very narrow, so it's a narrow deep lot, which causes the lot with non-conformity as well as the lot area. There are the two bulk variances that we're requesting that are existing conditions. And as highlighted in the T R C report, when you include the front porch, that is the four foot, I'm sorry, the covered front porch. When you include the covered front porch, which is required by your ordinance to be considered in part of the building coverage, while it's doesn't have walls around it, it is covered. That four by six foot covered porch causes an additional point three percent, I'm sorry, point four percent of building coverage, which puts us slightly over the maximum allowable twenty percent building coverage, so with regards to that non-conforming, that's a proposed non-conformity. And as I think we discussed actually at another recent meeting, and the and the conditions kind of are similar here, where we could fully comply by not covering that front porch, that doesn't affect our total lot coverage, because that area, that porch is already included. It's only when you put the roof over it that it also has to be included in the building coverage. And we do comply with the allowable maximum lot coverage. But when you include that porch, we're over on the building coverage, but we feel that that addition of that small little area provides for protection at the front door. It helps to further advance the conformity of this proposed residential structure with the neighbors, as I mentioned earlier, our neighbor to the left has a two story building and there's a residential dwelling, and there's a porch across the entire front of that dwelling. And we, regardless of that, we feel that the covered porch also adds some architectural you know, enhancement to the front view of the dwelling. So we would ask that the board consider the benefits of the covered porch and also recognize that there really aren't any substantial detriments to our neighbors or the public good by adding that front porch and would also grant the C two variance or the flexible variance for the covering of the front porch.
And Mr. Thomas, while he took a breath, I did find the letters which were sent, including the certified mailing receipts, which were provided sometime in in October, I believe, so they should be in the the packet the board's file. Michael, is there anything else you wish to share with regard to the zoning?
I think just to sum up that, so that you know, the the two, the lot area and lot width are existing non-conforming conditions that can't be cured. And that the other variants we're seeking, the minor deviation from the building coverage is enhanced by the benefits of the protection over the front porch, the the appearance of that front of the dwelling being enhanced. And that the board can grant all three of these variances without any said substantial detriment to the public good or surrounding properties and no detriment to the you know, the zone plan or the municipal ordinance.
And the the only way to cure this would be to sell off to the two neighbors if if they wanted it, because you can't buy from the neighbors, because that would make their lots more non-conforming, am I correct?
Yes, yes. Yeah, because both both of our neighbors, both of our neighbors on either side appear to be a hundred by a hundred and
Fifteen.
Fifteen, so they might be slightly over the ten thousand square foot minimum, so it would depend on how much you buy from them, but it's it doesn't appear that we, there would be any way of taking all three lots and providing, you know, three or making it conforming. I should also say too, let me, let me just one more point of is directly across the street from this site is a a portion of land owned by the township, that is, on the other side of Arlington, so I've talked you know, extensively about our neighbors to the sides and rear, but directly across the street is a plot of land that's owned by the township and actually designated on some maps as Arlington Park. I don't think it's a developed park, but it's a it's an open space. So there's no neighbor across the street other than township owned lands.
Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Thomas.
Okay, are there any board questions for this witness?
I I do have one quick question, and I apologize, Mr. Ford, you may have touched on this already. At the rear of your property, you have lots thirty two and lots thirty three. How are those two lots developed?
It's actually lots thirty one, thirty two and thirty three. According to the tax records are a single lot, so that's that's the lot to the rear that I was referring to, that's seventy five feet wide, and you know, three of those twenty five foot deep lots. And that's developed with a residential dwelling as well.
So just, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, lots thirty two and lots thirty three perfectly aligned with your side lot lines? Similar similar width, assuming similar depth, do those two lots have a house on them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, maybe I'm I'm a little confused here, the three, the three variances are what again now?
Lot width. There, we have a fifty foot wide lot and the R ten zone requires a hundred feet. Lot area. Where five thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet or ten thousand square feet are required, and then building coverage maximum is twenty percent, and without the covered porch, we comply. We're seeking relief to cover the porch and be slightly over that twenty percent threshold or at twenty point three percent.
So impervious is not an issue then, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, what about the basement, is that considered a floor or or a basement? Is it three story?
It's a lot. Yeah, it's a walkout basement, and one of the comments in the T R C report requires that we confirm and 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 I'll say demonstrate that the basement is not to the, you know, above the the portions of the basement are not above the grade such that it would be considered a floor and we shall comply.
Okay. And the stormwater management? What's up with that?
Yeah, stormwater management, at the time of the building permit, we'll deal with that. And the soil test data that we have at this point, where there's a soil log that was done by others on the property, and it doesn't, you know, appear to be suitable for like any kind of onsite infiltration, and that's what is referenced in the T R C report, so, but to the extent that's not able to be addressed onsite, there would be a contribution made to the township, and that's again in the T R C report.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, if not, let's open to the public.
Christine, can I, can you just read the instructions again, since we do have a few members of the public who may have joined after you read the instructions early in the meeting?
Sure, instructions for public input, for those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, press the raise hand button to use this feature. Click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon. For those members of the public that are listening via the call in number who wish to speak, please press star three. At at the appropriate time in the meeting, Mr. Healy will announce your name and unmute you, and you will have an opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and spell your name, and please provide your address. If you are providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if you're on WebEx, please press the lower hand button, and if you're calling in, press star three again.
Okay, so we do have the first member of the public, I'll unmute you, excuse me if I mispronounce your name, Kashif Barlas. I'll unmute you. So we would ask you to spell your name and provide your address, and we'll ask, since this is the testimony's been provided, if you if you're going to provide a statement, we're gonna have to swear you in from the by the board attorney. So Kashif.
Sure, my name is Kashif, it's pronounced Kashif, but it's K A S H I F. And do you read the last name as well?
Yep. Please.
My last name is B A R L A S, Barlas.
And your address?
Address is fifty five Arlington Avenue, Somerset, New Jersey.
Would you just raise your right hand? You swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I need to turn my camera on, it doesn't matter?
You can go ahead.
Okay. So I would just like to say that I did receive the letter from the from Maureen Matson. The letter showed, or I guess just asked if I was interested in purchasing the property. It did not mention anything to the fact that they were looking for a variance, that they're a builder, that they are that this property was either being offered or it was going to be built upon. So obviously, I didn't show interest because I own four lots on that in that area, and I didn't need to purchase another lot, so it didn't make sense, because to me, the property was unbuildable. But again, here we are few months down the line, a week ago, a week and a half ago, I received a letter stating that this meeting was being held to get the approval for the variance, and that's the first time I understood that, oh, actually, this lot was going to be built upon, so I I've I'm not a builder, I'm not in real estate, I'm not an engineer, I have no idea how this works. So I I, you know, started Googling to see who was building upon the lot, and I I realized that it was it was the builders, and they they were a construction company, and they own several different undersized lots within this township or Somerset or Franklin. And to me, it seems a little bit counterintuitive that someone is able to purchase a property that is undersized and then try to build on it by getting variances, I mean, that's the entire reason for why ordinances exist and rules exist and whatnot, so if you're already aware of it, you shouldn't be purchasing a property that is undersized and and you know, and then and then later on, doing your due diligence of getting getting it approved and so on, I think all that should be done ahead of time. My property is adjacent to this property, and I think that this this would absolutely hurt my resale value down the line. And I'm not, I I don't like the idea of this property being built upon, and I don't know if other neighbors are on this call as well, and I think they might be, because I have been talking to some people and and they expressed the same idea, and so I I basically think that this is this is not a good idea, this shouldn't be approved. And furthermore, I think if, let's say, if this is this is approved, they also have three other lots that are undersized, or, I'm sorry, two other lots that are undersized within this Somerset Township, so.
That has nothing to do with this application, any other properties that they may own, we're talking about this property.
Okay, did the board have an objection for me saying this, or is this just the attorney?
No, I mean, we, the 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 comments should be focused on the 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 application that is currently before the board with respect to this property.
Well, I'm just speaking about the approval process of this variance being approved, right, I'm not talking about the property, so let's say if this is approved, I guess board should look forward to other properties being brought upon to be approved and so on. So I don't think that this is.
Just so that you know, I mean, each application is considered on its own merits, so it really is irrelevant as to whether or not this applicant or anyone else, quite frankly, has, you know, similar sized lots in other parts of the township, so if you don't mind, just keep it. this applicant or anyone else, quite frankly, has, you know, similar sized lots in other parts of the township, so if you don't mind, just keep it focused on this. Frank.
Okay.
Frank, can you, uh and I'm so I'm asking the board attorney, uh can you give just a just a very brief overview of, I mean, we we do have these undersized lot cases, and there is established case law of how zoning boards are supposed to treat uh and what type of proof and testimony they're required to provide, could you provide just a very um I mean, it's not it's not a popularity contest of whether the board likes it or not, it's a little more complicated than that and 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 established in case law. So could you give the board a little bit of background?
Well, I don't know that I'm prepared to do that, Mark, at the moment, I can do it and.
Well, maybe, you know, you know what, to 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 uh maybe put Mr. Stahl on the spot, frankly, because he's he's the applicant's attorney. So maybe they need to give a little bit of a more of an overview of what they need to prove to the board.
No, uh thank you, thank you, Frank, uh the case uh the case escapes me. Reported case in the uh Superior Court of New Jersey, which defines what the applicant must prove. If the lot is undersized, it's number one, the applicant has to provide uh buy-sell letters to all those adjoining adjacent properties to see whether any property owner is prepared to buy the undersized lot, which would then eliminate uh any hardship or sell any portion of their property to the applicant in order to remediate the undersized lot. So that's number one, and that the letter that was sent to Mr. Barlas does talk about market value, does talk about hardship, I thought he may have indicated that he was not aware of the hardship, but I'm looking at the letter. So, you know, he was given the uh the pro forma, if you will, uh with a telephone number to contact Maureen and see whether he was interested. The other requirement in connection with this type of a variance is that which was provided by Mr. Ford, who was a professional planner and qualified as such, and he has to demonstrate to the board that the granting of these variances will not substantially, will not be a substantial detriment to the zone or zone plan and will not prepare, will not produce negative impacts upon the adjoining properties and the neighborhood. Now, this property, and I understand that Mr. uh Barlas would say that it's going to affect his property, but that is a that's that's a factual question. I would take the position, I'm not testifying, that rather than having an empty lot that is just sits there, that uh for no purpose, you're going to have a very nice home and very nice neighbors on that piece of property. If the board and the board has to decide whether or not the proofs were were satisfied, the requirements. Now, if the if the property is not allowed to be developed, and this is this is a fact, not a threat, uh the property then is zoned into inutility, and I would submit that the applicant can then make an application to the mayor and council for a condemnation, because they have been denied the the ability to use this a lot. Uh there are other undersized lots in the neighborhood, uh Mr. Ford has provided a testimony, and uh you know, we think this is a an application that should be granted. And and as Mr. Reagan so so properly indicated, there is no precedent. We don't have precedents in zoning law, each and as Mr. Healy said, I think, every application is viewed on its own merits. Uh neither uh approved or rejected based upon the testimony on that project. So I think I've, you know, I don't want to overspeak, so I that's that's my presentation.
And and just to follow up on that, um with regards to to the undersized lot, you know, I'm reading the Cox Treatise, which indicates that it's become, you know, common for an applicant for a variance for an undersized lot to make an offer to either purchase additional land from the adjoining owner or sell the undersized lot to the owner of the adjoining property, so that's obviously what's occurred here. And where there is no one willing to buy or sell, which is the situation here, um then it's clear that the applicant has made his their case for hardship insofar as there is no way to cure the the undersized, you know, deficiency.
What's the case, Frank? I didn't have.
There's a case, there's a case from two thousand and five, Jock versus Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Thank you. Okay, am I able to continue? I'm sorry, I I was cut off and uh I never actually finished what I was talking about.
Go ahead, sorry, it it'd be me who cut you off, and I apologize for that, but I I did want to give you and the other members of the public and the board an understanding of what the law is and what what they need to consider. So that's the reason I cut you off, so uh but please go.
No problem, no problem. Um so I I mean, so in my, I mean, in my opinion, I I believe that the building of this lot, of this uh dwelling on this lot in between two houses will affect my resale value. Um I just want to respond to the attorney's uh the the comment that an empty lot is worse than a build-upon lot, no, it's not, because this is a very small property that is fifty feet across, you can't even, when you're walking between uh this, my house and the house next to it, which is forty-five Arlington Avenue, I can guarantee you that anyone would not be able to tell that there is another property sitting there, because the lot is so small that it it's basically covered with bushes and it it seems natural to the to its environment, because that's how all the houses on the neighborhood are built, they are far far apart, and that's how they are. If you were to put a house in the middle, it does affect the value of my property. It is detrimental detrimental to the uh to the plan or the zoning or or the look of the neighborhood. And I don't think that it's uh it's a positive thing that that's being welcomed into this neighborhood. Um it as as you know, and as was discussed earlier, all the lots in the neighborhood are of mu- significantly larger size, not fifty feet or less, I mean, there there is another lot next to my property, which is twenty-five feet, that's probably available and you know, it may be built upon later on too, uh but I feel like if if this keeps, i- if we approve variances such as these, this will turn into a neighborhood that would look like uh Elizabeth or Dirty City, where houses are small and they're right next to each other, and they're, you know, almost touching each other's boundaries. I mean, I I I don't want our neighborhood to uh change its um its integrity and and stay this way, and I think my, and this is the same uh feeling that I have and my neighbors have as well, and um and and if this was a a private party that was building a house to, you know, and and that's all they could afford, then I I would understand, and you know, I would make uh I I would come to some kind of a uh 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 you know, I I I would be like, okay, you know, uh they should be granted this just because this is something that that they have worked their entire lifetime to build a house and whatnot, but it's not, it's a it's a contractor. They they knew this information, they had all the information, they have experience, they have attorneys, they have uh planners, they have engineers, and they decided to do this um and still go ahead with planning and uh building upon this lot, so I I don't think that this is uh appropriate, and this does uh create a hardship on me and my neighbors. Um and I I think that should be considered as well, I understand case laws and previous uh cases and so on, but that should also be considered, because uh the current township residents should be taken into account more than a contractor's uh business uh for building a new lot within the within this town. Um and I think that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Um we have a um call-in number. Um it's nine oh eight on mute you, and if you could provide your name, address. Um okay, go ahead. Call in, you're on your phone, nine oh eight? Oh, I'm sorry, let me do it again. I'm sorry, go ahead, call-in person on your phone, nine oh eight?
Yes, nine oh eight, two two seven, nine five eight two. All right, so so good evening. Okay, hello, this is Gail and Lawrence Bradley. We live right across the street, we are neighbors to Cash, who just spoke. Uh my husband and I.
Before you proceed, could you just raise your right hand?
Yep.
Do you swear that any, do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
We do.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we are at seventy-four Arlington Avenue. So the property that is being proposed to be built, I guess, would be like two hundred feet from our house. So as I just said prior, my husband and I are in agreement with Cash to have a house built on that small piece of property I believe is an encroachment on Cash and the neighbors to the right. Uh I wholeheartedly agree that all the rest of the home on Arlington Avenue, there's space between them, and there's an aesthetic. To build, for lack of a better word, a row house, and who I mean, who are the neighbors going to be, uh it's it's just it for for my husband and I, we wholeheartedly are against the building of that house. The lot is too small, and they're squeezing in a house that's just going to throw off the look of the property and perhaps even be a detriment to my husband and our property, which is right across the street. That's all I have to say, net-net, we are in total agreement with Cash, who just spoke.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm uh I do not see any other members of the public uh with their hands raised. Oh, wait, nope, sorry, somebody just popped in here. Um I don't have the full name, uh first name is Gloria. Hey, go ahead, if you could provide your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Yes, uh Gloria Van Ausdall, V.A.N.A.U.S.D.A.L.L. Forty-five Arlington Avenue.
Frank, do you want to swear her in? Matt, can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh I totally agree with everything that has been said, uh that would be a detriment to my property. Um also, uh I found that the there's deer that reside in there. They reside across the street in Arlington Park, and they cross the street, and they nibble on the foliage uh and go into that small lot. So you're encroaching on the deer. I feel that the deer would be coming on my property and adjoining properties um looking for food. And I think it would be a detriment to my property, also lowered property value.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have just one question.
Chairman, I don't see anybody else.
Is there someone else?
No, nobody else.
Okay. My question is regarding the the size of the house, is the size of the house in any way impacting the variances? So a smaller house, would that change any of the variants, or it it will not?
No. Well, I'll answer that question. I mean, they do have, they are, they are asking for a building coverage variance, so they're slightly above. Um and so they're, just by definition, they are building it out, as far as the building coverage, they're building it out to the max. They do meet all of the setbacks, though, but the building coverage, they are right right up to it and slightly over.
But the porch is what takes it over the the coverage, is it not, Mark?
Yeah, that's part of the bill, that's part of the building. Right, and and anything a future homeowner does, from a garden shed to anything else, would require an additional variance.
Yes, understood.
Even though we say that it's the roof over the porch that puts it over the building coverage limit, isn't it also true that if we scale down the house, you could still put the roof over the porch and be within the building coverage limits? You could make it a little smaller.
It's it's the porch is, the porch is twenty-five square feet. And I and I uh would defer to the applicant, but I would think that perhaps they would elect to not cover the porch rather than, you know, change the architectural plans. And and.
Just a question I have to ask.
Yeah, I have a a question, yeah, it seems like fifty feet instead of a hundred feet. I mean, it's not like it's ninety-five or ninety, which would be, you know, it's a huge difference. So uh and I'm not sure, I think maybe Mr. Allen Rich asked a question before about some other houses that do have that frontage, could uh uh could you just explain it again, please? So there are houses that have that frontage, but they are behind, so on this particular street, there are no houses with anything close to fifty feet frontage, is that correct?
Mike? Yeah, our neighbors, our neighbors to the right and left both exceed the fifty, they actually have the hundred foot, looks like they have the the minimum, the hundred foot width, and it's it's a, it's like I uh uh described earlier, it's a overall subdivision of the area, creating multiple twenty-five-foot wide lots, and it's a matter of how many of the lots are assembled, two, three, four. And yes, the neighbors on on the right and left look like they have four of those lots or a hundred feet wide, and and our neighbor directly be behind us has three.
Okay, so so basically, the aesthetic of the street, most of the lots do have the minimum hundred foot frontage, okay, thanks.
I'm just wondering about the the character of the street, if if this size house is fitting on on a lot size that is undersized uh and you're viewing the street, how is this house going to look compared to the other houses on the street? Would it not uh change or diminish the the character if it's squeezed in and all of these other houses are more or less spread out the same, but this house is just kind of.
Yeah, I was just, I just put up the architectural plans, if everybody can see those.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't mean to interrupt him, Miss Pathia, I just, I was going to ask Michael to put the architectural elevations up.
Yeah, I I just zoomed into the, this is the front view, the front porch, the the destroyed the garage.
I mean, this is not in, well, you, everyone will make their own judgment, but it's uh, I think it's a certainly a nice addition to the neighborhood, but of course, I'm a little bit uh biased.
I guess my my question was not so much to the the facade of the structure, but if the majority of the houses on the street are have certain spacing, and then in the in in this spot, it's it's all bunched together, I'm just wondering as to impacting the overall character and feel of the street. If this is just kind of in there, so that's what I'm just wondering.
Questions, maybe we can help Miss Pathia. There is a big backyard, because it goes a hundred and fifteen feet deep, am I correct?
Right, we we meet the rear yard setback as well, correct.
Right, and the side yards are, how did the side yards, how do they compare with with the other houses? How much, what are? How much, what are each side yard?
Well, our proposed side yards are twelve feet on the left and ten point five feet on the right. Uh, and based on the survey data, we have our, our neighbor to the left, their house is ten feet from the property line. So it's actually closer to the property line than, than the proposed structure. And then to the right, um, there's, um, the house is farther away from the, this is the driveway side, uh, of the, of the proposed dwelling. On the right, uh, is the driveway on our neighbors. We thought locating the driveway adjacent to our neighbors, you know, to compatible uses the access to the property. So the, so the house to our right is setback farther from the, the property line by default because of that, that driveway. It should also, when you, when you speak to the neighborhood, uh, just to the, to the northeast of us or, or to the left is, uh, the intersection of Eastern Avenue and Arlington is, and as you come off of Eastern Avenue toward this property on your left and right are commercial uses, and then there's, uh, an auto, uh, yard, um, immediately across, well, across the street from this property, uh, as you, as you get, go toward Eastern Avenue. So it's not all even any, it's not exclusively residential uses on Arlington in the immediate vicinity. There's more intense uses.
Okay, as you indicated, it's, it is not going to be so disproportionate with regard to the side yards because there already are those smaller side yard on one side of the neighbor and the other because the way we, we established the driveway, uh, it's gonna look wider.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions? Any more public?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, yeah, we didn't close it down. And the other, the same people who spoke before did not put their hands down. So I think what we should do is, uh, um, okay, I'm sorry, Barless did, um, okay, thank you. I mean, if you raise this, what I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna unmute them and see if they have any, any additional questions and comments based on the new testimony. I mean, just to cover it. Mr. Barless, do you have any, uh, other questions?
Yeah, I just speak, uh, based on that. So just to be clear, um, when we're talking about spaces between the two properties, the attorney and the, um, and the, and the engineer here are speaking with this property in mind. Yes, this property being built does cut down the yardage, uh, that, the spacing between the houses and, and, and so on. Like if you keep going down the street, this is how all of the properties are. They may have an empty lot in the middle or they have a lot that each property owns that's in the middle of the houses. So each property almost has one extra lot in the middle, giving it extra space. So yes, it would change the look of the neighborhood by adding this property. Because sure, they, they meet the minimum requirement for having the, the, the yard on the sides, but it doesn't completely, um, or i- it doesn't conform with the neighborhood's, um, essence. And, uh, to speak to the beginning of the street where there's commercial lot, uh, uh, the commercial properties and so on, uh, that's in the beginning of the lot and you can see the neighborhoods feel at, at that portion of the street. And then once you drive down the street, if, if being from this neighborhood, I think I can speak a lot better to this than anyone else, um, who has only seen it through the eyes of a, uh, plan paper. The, the neighborhood has a certain essence once you come down the street and you're not away from those commercial properties. It's not, it doesn't, uh, that, that essence doesn't continue and, and this portion of the street and, and going forward has a, has a different style of a, a, a placement of houses and how, how much gap there is in between and, and so on. So, so yes, it does make a difference and it will, uh, be a, uh, changer for the neighborhood if, if this was allowed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello? This is Gloria Van Oustall again.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that my property, uh, comes out only ten feet to that property. And so it'd be like right on top of my, practically right on top of me. Ten feet is all I have on that side. Don't like it, don't.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comments or questions? Okay, take those in. And then, uh, Mr. Barless, if I could ask you to put your hand down just so against, we can make sure we get everybody. Thank you. Uh, and I, I forget their name, but the, the call, the person who called in is gonna click on them. Do you have any other questions or comments? The caller?
Uh, no.
We're, uh, we're good, uh, as stated again, this is the Spradleys at seventy-four Arlington Avenue. We are totally against the build of the house and that's our decision. We're, we're not on board with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman, so with that, um, I think you can, uh, somebody can make a motion to close to the public.
Okay, well.
So like, can I say one thing? Can I say one thing?
Go ahead.
Oh, I actually did, uh, another, uh, variance application behind this at one twenty-five Runyon, which is the street behind this. And that was approved. That was a fifty by a hundred lot.
Okay, I think I'll echo the words of your lawyer. Each application stands on its own, uh, there can be certain characteristics with that property that may not be true for this property. They're never always the same. Uh, any other, that were close to the public, does the board have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I, I just, I, I did wanna, if, give me two minutes, just wanna provide something to the board with regards to a particular case that provides, I think might provide some guidance to the board as it considers the application, because there are, there are a lot of cases, um, with respect to undersized lots. Um, and they go both ways, as you would imagine. But there's a case, Del Meyer v. Lacy Township Zoning Board of Adjustment from nineteen, a law division case from nineteen eighty-seven, where the court summarized what the law requires of the applicant in the undersized lot cases. The applicant should, one, be required to carry the burden of proof in all other cases, as in all other cases, as to both the positive and negative criteria. Two, demonstrate that efforts were made to bring the property into conformity with the zoning ordinance by attempting to acquire adjacent property or by offering to sell the non-conformity property to adjacent owners. Three, submit detailed plans of the proposed house, which describe its appearance and prove its compliance with building codes. Four, attempt where applicable to demonstrate compliance with the use, side yard and setback requirements and the location of the house among other homes on small tracks with similar frontages. Uh, and five, attempt to demonstrate that the proposed use does not violate any traditional zoning purposes such as light air and open space. And then the court goes on to say the board should evaluate the, one, evaluate the testimony to determine whether it should elicit additional information to supplement the record. Two, make specific findings of fact based on the record to support its conclusions. Three, consider whether, in lieu of denying an application, it can approve it subject to reasonable conditions, which would modify the proposed, uh, and obviate or minimize any negative impact. And four, remember to be conscientious in its review of the facts since outright denial may amount to a confiscation, thus requiring condemnation by the municipality. So hopefully that can provide the board with some guidance and its considerations.
You know, what does, what the case law doesn't say, cause we've had many, several of these applications is the, the, the process fails in the buy-sell process because it never establishes guidelines for what a fair price might be for the, for the land. And if I'm not mistaken, uh, in order for someone to buy this property, it's got to be appraised at the value it would have if this application were approved and a house were built on it.
That is correct.
It's a lot different than talking about a vacant lot sitting there with no use. And we use the fancy words like, uh, condemnation. What this really means is if we saw fit to deny this application, it could put the township in the position where it has to eventually purchase that property for that appraised price as though the house were approved and it was a buildable lot, which on a one-time basis might not be, you know, too outrageous, but there've been a number of these applications if we denied them all and the town was buying all these lots. So that's another, as far as I'm concerned, that's another consideration. And the case law doesn't take into consideration the prices that people are, you know, they, people buy these properties cheap and take advantage of this, this law and sell them at top dollar if anybody's gonna buy it from them. And that's what's unfair. However, as a board, we have to make a decision which way we wanna go. We have to make this property, if we're going to approve it, we have to make sure that it can fit within this neighborhood and somewhat satisfy the neighbors' concerns. We may never be able to satisfy them completely, but it has to be able, you know, to fit. Otherwise, there are consequences, you know, to, to real consequences to our actions. Now, uh, I'm open to any other comments or questions or?
Mr. Thomas, is it appropriate for me to just respond briefly to you?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I think, I mean, obviously Maureen buys a piece of property. We don't know how inexpensive or quote cheap it was, but she buys it. She's then gonna develop it with a very nice house. She is in fact taking the risk. She has to make it affordable. It is an affordable house. She has to price it right, uh, so someone will come in and buy it in a nice neighborhood. If she can't, she runs the risk of having a house that will not sell. And that, that's a significant risk for anyone, even though the housing market is rather healthy at this point in time. So it's not like someone is going into certain areas, uh, buying condemned properties, picking them up and then selling them, uh, out. She's investing, she's investing in the, in the dirt and she's investing in the building. And I would indicate that the letters to all of the adjoining property owners, uh, which is used in, in fact says market value as if the, the lot was ready for a building permit. If someone wants to buy it, you know, we have this all the time. If neighbors don't want something to happen, they have the right to acquire it. Uh, I mean, this happens in commercial properties also, where someone's gonna put, I don't wanna bring up, you know, someone's gonna put a warehouse and, or, or a, uh, an assisted living and the neighbor say, oh no, oh no, oh no. Well, that person has rights and if they don't like it, make an offer and buy it. So I, I think, I don't wanna, I don't wanna cheapen Maureen here and I don't think it's fair. She, she's coming in as someone who provides a service, she makes money. I don't know how much and it's none of my business or the board's business, but she is at risk. She spends her time and she makes a, a profit. And it's like anyone else that's providing a service, whether it's Frank Regan and myself, who are lawyers and we provide a service or anyone on the board, she is doing it. And I don't think it's as fair to assume she's gonna make some enormous profit. She's got labor, materials, land, real estate taxes. The longer it takes to sell, the, the longer the cost. So I, I think this board knows the criteria which they must use to judge the case and I just ask them to judge it fairly.
This is Gary Rosenthal. Um, along, along the lines of, uh, what we just heard from, uh, Mr. Thomas, uh, I think we have to l- 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 look at this application and, and decide if it's gonna enhance the whole area. Because if we don't concur or we don't, don't, um, uh, the decide to okay and everything else and the, the decision is that it, it does enhance the area, we could be a subject to a lot of problems. That's my comment.
Well, anybody else?
My only comment, um, in regards to this is the size is the size of the house as it is proposed. Is there a, a better, uh, balance between the residents and the, the existing neighborhood? How it is char- characterized? Is a midway point where if the house were smaller on the same lot, since it is an undersized lot, does that help at all in it, it, if it were, say, a two-bedroom instead of a three-bedroom? I'm just throwing that out there as a suggestion, since there seems to be a lot of, uh, concerns from the neighbor in terms of it being in, an undersized lot and the size of the house in this, in the, uh, the setbacks, uh, the, the, the lot area rather. Uh, I'm just wondering if the size of the house, does that resolve any of that? If that is reduced so that the relative space of that lot to this, to the amount of, uh, property, uh, that that's, that the house, the dwelling is taking out, does that, does that help at all?
I think that's the whole point. I think the size of this house in relation to its property is what makes this overcrowded that we've been talking about. And I would look at it differently. I would look at it, definitely differently with a smaller sized house. And I think we have done that in the past with some other applications that we've had, uh, before. That, you know, the idea of a, for lack of a better term, a totally full-sized house on a lot that's half the width it's supposed to be is the problem in my mind. Or one of them, but that's only me. And he, uh, I think that was a good question and are there any other comments or? Uh, at some point, we're, we're gonna have to uh, get us, get a summation and a motion. So if you have questions, ask them. If there aren't any other ones, you have no further witnesses, you have anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Saul?
Well, I, I think I've said everything. I just wanna, and I don't usually give summations on short cases cause I know the board has been, uh, very diligent in listening. But I would say that I think that as the testimony has borne out, the house in its size is an enhancement for the neighborhood. If you start to, and any reduction in size, get stuck with the magic word that none of us like and that's called arbitrary. You know, well, how much do we have to knock off? Four feet in the back, sixty on the side, well, we'll knock off a bedroom. It's, the, the house was designed to fit on the property and to look good. So it's not so easy just to say, let's make it a smaller house. You make it a smaller house, then I think that does create a negative impact upon other homes. This is a nice neighborhood. All these individuals are proud of their houses. And if you have these three bedrooms and a nice house, I think you're gonna have, as Mr. Rosenthal indicated, it's not the law, but you're gonna have an enhancement of what we have. And it's not gonna be negative. And I, there's almost no way, uh, that I know of, and, you know, I certainly be guided by Mark or, or Frank. You know, the board just can't say, well, come back with another house and show us different, something different. You know, the board just can't say, well, come back with another house and show us different, something different. Well, why don't you just knock off ten feet? You know, the board has a lot of power, but that, that's not the answer. The answer is, does this house honor the objectives of the municipal land use law? Have we satisfied our proofs, which I submit when Frank read from Cox? Uh, we do. Everything that it said, we do here. And, and what I said before about condemnation, that was also said there. So I, I think that this is gonna be a nice house. Maureen has a, a motive to make something nice, not to have some garbage piece of a house that won't sell, but to have something in a nice neighborhood that's, that's everyone's gonna be proud of. It's not gonna be a McMansion, so it's not gonna throw out the values of the houses. It's gonna be a house that I submit is gonna fit, as, 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 uh, Mike said, within this neighborhood. The other houses have side yard problems. One of the neighbors testified, well, it's ten feet. Well, that's what we're giving is ten feet. Uh, and then the other side is a driveway. So I don't think we're getting into this crowded, uh, uh, effect, if you will. I think people driving down the street are gonna see nice houses. They're gonna see the one that Maureen's gonna build. This is nice. A family will come in with a couple of kids, I would expect with three bedrooms. Nice young family, starter house. That's what we want. And they'll come here into our community, live here. You know, then they maybe move on. They'll buy a bigger house. Somebody else will come in with young children. This is a dynamic that everyone on this board has lived with. I mean, I grew up in New Brunswick, the same, you know, we all, this is how the dynamics work. So that's my summation.
Okay. Thank you. That's fine. Now back to the board. Any comments, questions or motions?
It, uh, it's a nice house, but it, in my opinion, it changes the character in the neighborhood. That's my opinion.
Hey, anybody else? It's that time. We need to come up with a motion and we need to make a vote, have a vote. So anyone who wants to step forward can start that.
I make a motion. We approve ZBA twenty-one. Excuse me. Zero, 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 two, four.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call the board.
Cheryl Bethia? Cheryl Bethia?
I'm gonna say yes, but I, I just feel like the house could have been, could have been smaller.
Rich Prokhanik?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Against.
Gary Rosenthal?
I'll vote yes.
I'm sorry. Did you say against or yes? I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Basim Verdas?
No, against.
Chairman Thomas?
I'm gonna vote yes, not because I want to, but because this application is a same example of some problems that exist with this part of the municipal land use that we can't solve. We need legislative help and council help. And I don't wanna put the township at risk of having to buy these properties. This house should be smaller. I don't agree completely with Mr. Saul. This neighborhood exists. This house could be, could be architecturally attractive and fit in and be a better, uh, example of what it is. But I, I will for this one vote yes. Christine, is that, uh, anything else on the agenda?
No, there's nothing else on the agenda.
But just for the record, that's four, two.
Oh, wait, somebody, wait, somebody's talking. Who?
That was just Frank. I just wanted to make it clear
Okay, go ahead, Frank.
public that, um, it's a four, two vote for, and, and to approve the application, just so the public knows.
Thank you very much, uh, members of the board. We, thank you for your time. Uh, please all be safe and be well. Uh, thank you again.
Okay, you will have a, to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Move.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Everybody have a safe, good weekend.
Thank you, board.
You too.